All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Hello and welcome to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. The Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Russell, Alves, Corbin, Moore, and Scootley. And then on Zoom, we have Commissioner Fritsch. There are no commissioners absent. So with six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
Thank you, Megan. My name is Frank Corbin, and I'd like to call to order the October 14th Planning Commission meeting for Lewis County. I'd like to introduce to you Natalie Kameneke, the new Senior Long Range Planner. I think I said it right?
Um, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, and it's great to see you. Why don't you share a little bit about yourself before we begin the meeting tonight?
Um, sure. I've just recently joined Lewis County. I've been here about a month now. I've worked in planning in several different jurisdictions in Washington State. Um, most recently, the city of Gig Harbor. And then, um, I was at the City of Federal Way for about six years. I spent a little bit of time in the private sector, working for a, um, construction company, Marine Floats, which does overwater construction for docks and things of that nature on the shoreline. Um, and I worked for, uh, Cavitz County for a number of years, three plus years, and began my career in Pierce County, um, starting in like the cartography lab, doing some resource management projects, and then working into planning and development, working at the Development Center, doing everyday questions, and then moving into case planning, focusing on Gig Harbor Peninsula and Key Peninsula. So that's kind of my timeline in a nutshell, working backwards. And I'm really excited to be here in part of Lewis County. I'm kind of originally from the area. I went to school for high school in Olympia. Spent a lot of time down here playing softball and sports and things of that nature. So it's a very special area to me, just in general, and, um, very happy to be here with you all.
Awesome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, well, prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'll entertain a motion and a second from the planning commissioners to approve the agendas presented.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six zero. All right, also prior to tonight, the Planning Commission received the meeting notes of April 22nd, 2025. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Thank you, Roger. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting notes of April 22nd, 2025. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six zero. Okay. The next item is public comment. Please note that public comments are different than public testimony. Since this is a workshop, we will not be taking public testimony. But, uh, if a member of the public would like to provide public comment at this time on any subject, uh, please signify, uh, to Megan who will call on you.
We have no members of the public in the room, and it looks like we have a couple people on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you would like to provide comments, please unmute at this time. Okay, seeing none.
Okay, there's no public comment. So tonight, we're having a workshop on the Critical Areas Ordinance. We've been waiting for this for a long time, and, um, I'm looking forward to hearing what staff has to say. So, uh, Mindy or Natalie? Okay, Natalie, yeah, take it away.
Apologies, okay, yes. Mike is on, so again, good evening, everyone. It's, you know, again, it's really nice to meet everybody and be here together tonight to consider the Critical Areas Ordinance update. And just for the record, my name is Natalie Kameneke, and, uh, we'll go through the presentation and the changes, and please feel free to ask questions or, or comments along the way. Uh, next slide, please. So as you may know, uh, we just completed the periodic update for several of the other items for, uh, the required, um, periodic update. Uh, the final step, um, is the workshop tonight for the Critical Areas, um, ordinance. Um, we are planning to tentatively have the, uh, I'm sorry, we might need to, I got a little off script here. Um, so the slide that we see tonight, um, we have our public, um, our, our Planning Commission workshop for tonight, and originally, the public hearing was to be on October 28th, but, uh, later on in our, uh, discussion tonight, we're going to have to pick a different date for, uh, the November week. Veterans Day is a holiday, so we're looking for, um, one of the days on November 10th or 12th, so we'll get that, um, later on in the, in the presentation. We are still tentatively, um, planning on being before the Board of County Commissioners in, um, uh, December 3rd for a workshop, and, um, the hearing December 9th. Next slide, please. Um, attached with your information, uh, tonight's materials include a staff report, a draft revised code and commentary, and supporting documents are also found on the county website at the link provided. Slide. Our agenda tonight goes through several different topics, and we are covering, uh, code reorganization, uh, the Critical Areas Report, uh, land divisions, general mitigation and monitoring, uh, wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat, geologically hazardous areas, critical aqua recharge, and non-conforming activities, and then our next steps. And again, feel free to interrupt with questions or comments as we get going. Next slide. So why are we, uh, let's start with a reminder about how, why we are updating the Critical Areas Ordinance. As part of the periodic update, we are required to update the Critical Areas Ordinance to incorporate changes in best available science. Best available science is produced by the state Department of Fish and Wildlife and Ecology, most notably. Best available science and Commerce Checklist for the Critical Areas Ordinance are available on the webpage linked earlier. The Critical Areas Ordinance is Chapter 17.38 of the Lewis County Code, so we're making amendments to the code, uh, to address best available science. The attachment to the staff report are the amendments that you will be making a recommendation on. Next slide. We will begin with the noted reorganization of the code. Uh, this includes Article 2, activities allowed without a critical areas permit, uh, to a new section. The section is largely unchanged. Uh, notable updates, uh, include provisions for hazard tree removal, vegetation management, and clarity for vegetation management for routine maintenance within public rights of way, uh, minor and short-term projects, and emergency actions for hazard tree removal. Uh, the reorganization of fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, it's largely unchanged, um, except for updated for state references and manuals. Uh, the stream classifications are relocated to a new section. Um, we have consolidated the other agency permit requirements and clarified to a new section of code. For other agency permits, examples of that, um, would be, uh, the hydraulic project approval from WDFW or, uh, US Army Corps core permits, just as a few examples, but not limited to those. Uh, next slide. Uh, stream buffer classifications, um, is not new. The section is only relocated, um, and as well as the reduction on averaging for, uh, stream buffers is, uh, given a new code section, but largely unchanged. Next slide. Critical Areas Report Language has been added, uh, to clarify that available maps are used to determine whether critical area report is required. Development within geo-hazard and critical aqua for recharge, uh, do require critical areas report with this update. Um, this is also, um, the administrator can waive portions of this minimal requirements if they determine they are not applicable to the proposed activity. Do we have any questions on any of the critical areas updates for, um, critical area report? Okay, next slide. Please. Uh, specific to the land division section of the code, updated language that clarifies land that is located wholly within a wetland, stream, or aquatic habitat, or its related buffer, may not be subdivided. Um, if the property is located partially within a critical area or its buffer, there must be sufficient land outside of those regulated areas to accommodate potential facilities to support the use. That includes, but is not limited to, uh, infrastructure such as septic systems, access, and things of that nature. Are there any questions regarding land divisions? Okay, next slide.
Thank you. Been off for a month. I think it was the signage and the fencing when I was reading that, that caught my eye. And I'd probably have to go back and, and study it again, but the, my point in, in bringing it up here was, it almost seemed odd to me that, oh, I think it was this. I think it actually said that if you did a wetland and then had to do something, you actually had to put signage up to show people where that wetland started. And, and that's odd. Then we don't have to do that now. If, if I go build a house, I write the wetland report and build the house, and I don't put signage up for anybody that might have a wetland on my property.
Uh, so this section is specific to land divisions. So if you were proposing a short plat and creating lots, you would be designating that critical area and its buffer into.
I still didn't, I still haven't had to do any signage in the past. When I, when I did those short plats that were wetland.
Yeah, it is being added, so that's.
That's the one I wanted to bring up. So, yeah, okay. I would, I don't like that added. I don't like that signage thing, but that's just, you said to speak up when we could speak up.
Absolutely.
I'll just chime in. There are a lot of things that we don't like, that we did do early, reach out to our agency partners, and so there are a number of things that come in, that come in because they're best available science, and they are the, the model or the model ordinance of, of those agencies, so.
So are you, you're saying that we are being forced by somebody else to put signs up?
We're being forced to have everything in the Critical Areas Ordinance based on the Growth Management Act and the best available science of other agencies, because that's where this all comes from. And so there are many changes based on what things that we had not done in the past that we were supposed to do, and there are many changes based on, uh, things that need to be added in for best available science. We have always, because other jurisdictions do it as well, needed to note the boundary of the critical area during land division, and we didn't have it in our code. So actually, this is something that we were supposed to be doing, and we weren't.
Is it?
Land division, to indicate that this is where the buffer is.
So that's during the process of land division. Once you're done and you're building, this is just kind of a temporary signage thing or a temporary.
It is not supposed to be temporary, because you are not supposed to be disturbing the buffer. The buffer is not supposed to be disturbed. And so it is supposed to indicate, this is where the edge of the buffer is, and you're not supposed to be in there mowing, removing trees, your garden. The buffer is supposed to be untouched. Right, ground disturbing activity within the wetland buffer requires permitting and mitigation. And so, yes, you are supposed to, once you do the land division, to note where that land is, so that the future property owners are not disturbing that area without coming in for a permit, and they know where that area is. And this is the way that the code was supposed to be already for our county.
This, of course. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't see. My bad.
I'd, so, okay. So I just, I mean, point of clarification, I, just to make this, I mean, I think we all know the answer to this, but the, the best available science is determined by the state, correct? That is their definition of best available science.
And the state requires that we use it.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that that's clarified. I mean, I understand. And so I guess my other question is, I guess you're telling me that there, this is not something that we, I mean, obviously, I don't think anybody wants fences everywhere where it used to be natural, and signs everywhere where it used to be natural. That seems dumb. Um, so is this something that can be pushed back on at all, or is this, like, what, what? Yeah, what, what is the point of, I mean, I know what the point of it is, but I'm just trying to flesh this out a little bit. Is there, is there any way to find a, a different avenue where it's not so, such an unnatural way of defining the area? Is that possible?
I have a good answer for that.
I mean, is there, I'm just wondering if there's kind of some, some maybe out of the box way we can comply without.
Sure, the other way to comply, yeah, the other, the way, other way to deal with that would be likely to, during the land division, to put those features and buffers in its own tract that is then owned by a homeowner's association, which is not something that we particularly like. So, um, I, I have.
It's just us here, you can tell me. Nobody's watching.
No, or remember, we're on the record.
No, I'm just.
I think we need to, I think, what, what, what do I want to say? I think that everyone, you guys and the board, need to be very cognizant of what you want to fall on your swords on. Because if we're gonna get, because we need to decide what we're ready to fight through appeal, and what is not worth trying to fight through appeal. Right, so we need to really just think about, there are lots of things in here you guys are not gonna like. We don't like, the Board of County Commissioners are not gonna like.
They're, yeah.
You don't like it.
Yeah.
But we also just have to decide, where do we want to place our energy to fight? My personal opinion is this is likely not it. This is likely not the topic we want to fight on. There's other things that I think we would want to fight on besides this. So I guess that's, that is where I will leave it.
So I just have one quick, if I could, um, when we're talking about fencing and signage, I mean, are there specs for this? Like, it has to be so big, so tall, so certain looking. Can it be monuments in the ground, like pins? You know, are there, yeah, what, what kind of a, a boundary do we have to set? I mean, is it possible to do something like monuments as opposed to fencing?
I think that can be accomplished, you know, through the critical area delineation. Let's say it's a wetland, and you're delineating the wetland, prescribing the buffer, um, appropriate fencing, um, or, or demarcating that as far as a sign on a, on a, on a pole, maybe a wooden pole. You know, every so often, your biologist is usually going to recommend where and at what distances those, um, markers are going to be.
So is it, is the demarcation?
Item, so let me read, I was looking for the.
Yeah, yeah.
Piece in here, so let me read it to you. Um, so this is, oh, let me, let me tell you where we are. So if you want to reference it later, it's in the record for you to go back and look at. So let me find my, uh, code reference here. Where are we at? We're at 1378, 270, required buffered widths, and we are, I'm reading item. 1738, 270, and I'm on B. So this is other protections. Use with proximity impacts such as noise, light, glare, or other characteristics may affect the wetland ecological function, may be required to provide greater buffers than indicated, or to provide site design layout or operational measures that reduce the project impacts, the levels appropriate to designated buffer elements to reduce potential buffer impacts include screening, um, with dense plantings, fencing, or other items. So it does fall to discretion, right, as what those can be. So, and things that, um, like our hearing examiner hasn't always, you know, required fencing, or it can be very simple, so, um, I don't think that we're prescriptive as to how we do it. I think what we need to do is denote the edge of buffer.
Okay, so there's, it just has to be marked somehow. It doesn't have to be a certain type of marking. Okay, just curious.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, my question is, and probably will be throughout all of this, is how do you enforce any of this?
Enforcement is always, always based by complaint. If your neighbor calls in a complaint, then we will enforce it. We have two enforcement officers for the entire county.
Yes, yes.
And so, how does enforcement happen?
I understand.
Right, enforcement happens when a neighbor calls in a complaint.
We could make up anything, it'll never get enforced.
It is critical, however, that the rules be on the books so that they can be enforced, and we need to demonstrate that our rules conform to state law. That's what we have to do during periodic updating. Okay.
So, well, when, when the wetland's being done, I'm certain one or two of you here have done one of these short plats with the wetland on it before. But when you do it, you have to delineate the wetland. To delineate the wetland, you have to sign flagging, mark it, put the number on it. It's gotta be on your drawings, and so it's marked. The wetland is marked, and you get your short plat and that kind of thing. Some of you that have done it know that you do this, and it's years before you sell anything. The idea that, that you would put up a sign and mark something that the wetland was there, and then sell the property two or three times to have it ignored, is just beyond me. I don't think there's a rule that says we have to put this in our code. There's plenty of, you're right, Mindy, there's plenty of stuff that we might want to die on.
Yeah, what I just read, so what I just read is actually what's in the code today. That, that's not an addition. We already have what I read in the code already. It has been in place.
That says what?
What I just read to you is already in place.
That we have to put signage up?
Or other items that demarc, that demarcate the, it's already, that's already in the code.
So the flagging's up there from the wetland, and that's it?
That, what I just read to you about demarking the side of the buffer is already in code.
So we're, we're not really proposing to change that.
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as it's demarked.
Uh, it, or other, as we said.
Or other.
Yeah, this is existing code. This isn't code we propose.
Are we putting more words in on the lineage?
No.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
The only, yeah, the only time new stuff is coming in is when we feel that we have to do it.
Right.
Right, we are, we are taking the lightest touch we can possibly take.
I read signage, though, on your side by side. It's odd that I read it, because it, it would have said that, why would I have?
Yeah, because what, what you read, like, I think we could all live with. Yeah.
Doing a search on the code, sorry, I'm doing a search on the code itself for the term sign and fence, fencing and demarcation. And the only place that I'm finding that is specific to that is that wetland buffer component. And that is also the one that only rings to mind as something that we are required to do during land division, is demarc the outside of it. But we're not, that language, we were not changing. We have to implement it.
It's fine, we'll do it ribbon, if that's, okay.
Yeah. We will leave it to whomever is making the final decision. Usually during, during a land division, it's the hearing examiner to decide what's appropriate.
Did somebody, did I, I asked about signage?
You did.
I thought somebody said we had to put signage up.
The word signs only shows up one time in the code that we sent you guys, and it comes up related to utility projects. I'm not finding, no, that's okay. Hey, it's okay. That's okay. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll jump to the next slide.
Uh, we, we already kind of touched on.
Yeah.
Danger trees, we can.
Hazard.
Unhazardous trees, and the allowance for emergency operations for tree removal.
Excuse me, I thought, I thought we hadn't got to danger trees yet, because I, I've sent you an email saying I wanted to talk about it, but, okay. The, um, if we've already passed it, then let me jump back. I think the danger trees, uh, provision says something about you have 14 days to report. And is that a change, or is that new?
It's a public works request, so that we have sufficient time for them to go out and take care of hazardous trees before running into any timelines for, so a number of, actually, a number of the changes related to hazard trees were specifically public works requests to make sure that they can do their activities quickly.
Yeah, it, the homeowner has to deal with hazard trees too, though, and they can't take down hazard trees in critical areas.
So, yeah, so emergency, I'm gonna read, I'm just reading from the code. Emergency, then this is new. This is underlined new, underline new section. I am in, hold on, I have to pop back up to the code that I'm in. It's H, okay. So we are in 1738, 0602H, right, HI, sorry, not HI, 2. Emergency actions that create an impact to critical area or its buffer shall use reasonable methods to address the emergency. In addition, they must have, have the least possible impact to the critical area or its buffer. The person or agency undertaking such action shall notify the administrator within 14 working days following commencement of the emergency activity, except for county-wide regional disasters for which the administrator shall provide alternative deadlines. And this is specifically under emergency actions. Those activities necessary to prevent immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare that pose an immediate risk of damage to private property and require remedial or preventative actions in a timeframe too short to allow for compliance with required timelines of this chapter. So we are allowing you, under that circumstance, you have an immediate threat to deal with it, and then you have 14 days to make sure that you come in and start the permitting process with us.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'm a criminal, because what I would do is go drop the trees down that I wanted to take, that were near a critical area, and wait and see if anybody said anything, because I got 14 days to do it. Instead of making it so that when I see one go down, I know the guy's got a permit, right? I got in, I got in hot water on this, because I watched a guy do it near a type F, and he just wanted all the trees, and he did it right on Jackson Highway. And so I'm touchy about it. I don't like it. I, I thought the idea of leaving the trees in the area was okay, but I, that 14 day, I thought, who, why do you need 14 days? Nobody is qualified to go take one down in the middle of a storm. I, I like your PUD guys, that makes sense, but I don't see it for the homeowner.
So it's, it's not a, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just taking this down, because I'm calling it a hazard. It has to be, you know, some sort of emergency for life safety and hazards. So maybe you have a piece of property that is developed, you're sort of close to the buffer, and there's a tree in the buffer that's gonna fall on your house. There needs to be kind of a situation like that for just a removal of a tree in a regulated buffer or critical area. So it's not just, I'm taking this tree down, because it looks old and, old and damaged if it's not going to fall on your house, or.
That's why I talked 14 day. That's the only, that's why the 14 day thing. And when I buy a house and it's sitting there, this was this guy's issue, right? Is there wasn't a rule saying it, and so he took them all down, and when I turned him in, he said, they're all danger trees, they're within 200 feet of my house. Yeah, yeah, they're all in that stream, and they've been there for 100 years, right? And he logged it. He didn't just take a danger tree or two down, he logged it.
Yeah, he'd be in violation of this code. Yeah, he'd be in violation of this code.
So that's the 14 day.
Yeah, the first, the first, right, the first, the the 14 day is simply to allow for if it meets the definition, emergency actions, including those activities necessary to prevent an immediate threat to public health and safety or welfare or that pose an immediate risk of damage to private property and that require remedial remedial or preventative action in a timeframe too short to allow for compliance with other requirements of the chapter. If you meet that, if that is the definition of your tree, it meets that, that definition that I just said, then you may take that tree out and you have 14 days to come in and get that permit from us. But if you don't meet that clause, that it's an emergency action, life safety,
Danger tree.
Danger tree. If you, if you don't meet that and you take that tree out and your neighbor calls you and you come in, you're going to be in violation. Your na- what you're, what that person?
With 200 feet, I think is the definition of you.
But it has to pose a threat. You have to be able to demonstrate that it poses a threat. That's what this says. That pose an immediate risk of damage to private property. So the code doesn't just say the tree exists within 200 feet. It has to meet that whole clause A that I read. The whole thing. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so the 14 days lives underneath of that clause for these type of circumstances. You can do the action and then you have 14 days to come get your permit from us for doing it. Okay.
Okay, um we are on general mitigation and monitoring, um slide, uh, and this is clarifying uh, general mitigation and monitoring. This is for, um all sections of the code. There may be some more specific criteria for mitigation and monitoring, um within wetlands or, uh, fish and wildlife habitat conservation area. But the allowances clarify that mitigation sequencing applies to both the critical area and their buffer. Um, allows for different mitigation uh, monitoring periods on a case by case basis and also allows for flexible, flexible mitigation uh, for smaller projects. Uh, do we have any questions regarding mitigation and monitoring?
You say monitoring, so who in the county is going to come and check on this over the 10 year period?
That's not what we do. So technically, you're already required today to submit monitoring plans to us on a prescribed basis. And we're required to take a look at those and ensure that, that the you still have the right survival rate on your trees or plants that you've planted and so forth. The, the big change here again goes back to public works and them requesting flexibility for smaller projects because they do very small projects oftentimes as mitigation. And so we've reduced, we, we allow for reduced requirements around monitoring for smaller projects.
So, so it's on the homeowner then to
Yep.
to monitor that. Public works that wants to do a project.
No, they, they have to monitor theirs. So this applies to everybody.
Okay.
This applies to anybody who does a project and has to do monitoring, including public works. They often do like quarter acre mitigation for work that they do. And so we're allowed now through this change to reduce the monitoring requirement for ourselves.
Jeff?
When does the state get involved on follow up?
Only if it's state required mitigation and they have their own mitigation requirements.
A buffer, for example, working in a wetland?
I guess I don't understand your question.
So oh, okay, I, I, I have to explain the situation in order to explain the question. My neighbor uh, who shall remain nameless, uh, applied for a building permit to do a wedding venue on his property down below us. And, uh, went through the whole process, built one building. Uh, of course, nothing was legal. Then he proceeded to dig up the wetland, which is almost half his property and tried to put in a pond. So the state was called. They came out and said, no, no, no. And he had to fill it back in again. Now he's mowing the whole wetland.
So that's a state mitigation project, so the state is responsible for monitoring of that.
The permit came through Lewis, Lewis County.
The question is, your, I mean, your, your example is that they did something and the state enforced on them.
Yeah, I'm just wondering at what point does the state get involved?
It depends on a case by case basis. It, the state can opt to take, to step in during certain things. They don't always, so we follow our rules. The state can't step in.
Who would a neighbor call? County?
Yeah, start with us.
The enforcement?
Yeah, you would start with us to see if they have the right permits. Yep, you can start with us.
Don't get me started on enforcement here. I'm sorry, I, I won't.
Bob, did you or Jason have something that you wanted to? Okay.
Okay, great. We'll move on to the next slide and more into wetlands. Um there are many changes summarized on the next four slides, beginning with, uh, wetland assessment reports being required when wetland conditions are known or likely to be present, uh, based on visual observations or publicly available data. Uh, wetland delineations are valid for five years. Um, after five years, the county will determine whether revision or additional assessment is necessary. Uh, and also the allowed uses table, um, has been updated to include home based business activities. Are there any questions on this slide?
Home based businesses in the wetlands?
Not in the wetland, but on properties of a certain size. If you have, uh, under low, um, moderate or high, um sensitivity to the wetland, you would need more acreage for a home business if you have one unit on the property. So if you have a, one single family residence, um, in a on a property that's over five acres in a high, high function wetland, you would be able to do that if you had enough acreage. So it's kind of a sliding scale between um, the sensitivity of the wetland, the size of your property and the units that you have on site. So there's some minor limitations, um, based on the size of the property and the, um, classification of the wetland. Um, and if you have multiple units on the property, that might disqualify you because the ADU will count as one unit in this circumstance, not in any other density type issues. But for looking at the impact for having a home occupation on a site that has critical area wetland.
So let me clarify that this was a negotiation discussion, a point of negotiation. So the agency in their comments wanted if you add a home business in your residential, that it automatically kicks it up in intensity. And so they had home based business as a separate line item in their high med- high, moderate and low. And we argued successfully that a home based business is in the home and therefore it is not. So we have it now saying residential or home based business to combine those together rather than having them see a separate line item. So I view this as a win in a negotiation to try and get this, so it's reasonable.
So when I was first hearing what, what you were saying, Natalie, I'm hearing, okay, so you've got a buy and sell business on eBay in your house, or you've got something that incorporates a certain percentage of your property. Is it, is it, is it based on a sliding scale like that?
No, so the original comment was not based on any kind of sliding scale. And so it was going to be its own line item that automatically if you had a residence and you added a home based business, it kicked it to the next level. If you look in our table now, we have residence or home based business always combined, so it alone doesn't kick up your intensity.
Oh, okay.
So again, I think this is a win through our negotiation, the way that we've incorporated this topic in. But we did have to add it, so we tried to add it in the least impactful way possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Great. Next slide, please. Uh, so next we're going to move on to a new footnote in table seventeen thirty-eight three, um expressing the assume buffer conditions, uh, for the prescribed buffer widths. Buffer widths in the table assume it is vegetated with native plant community, appropriate for the ecoregion or one that performs similar function. Um, there's also an added note, uh, for measurement of a buffer that terminates within a continuous slope of 35% or greater. The buffer shall extend, uh, to a point 25 feet beyond the top bank of the sloped area. Do you have any questions on those two items? Great, next slide. Uh, this next section, um, includes new language, uh, being added for reduced buffers on functionally disconnected wetlands when legally established substantial improvements such as road, railroad, or structure. Sure.
That's when I was getting confused here, Natalie. The adding the buffer on a steep slope. So if you have some steep slope, it's got a bunch of timber on it. You got a buffer that. But this now says you've got to add buffer all the way up to the top of the slope, not where it is either. And then so all of those trees, is that what that says?
So buffers are measured horizontally, so once you delineate and then you would measure over, if happenstance that there's a 35% slope there, which would be a critical landslide hazard anyway at that, you know? So there would be at the top of that 35% slope, 25 feet added.
The slope was longer than the buffer was horizontally.
Okay. Is that a, is it a 35%?
Yeah, it's probably at least 35. You have to go and look, but it's at least 35, but, um so even if it's not my property, it's somebody's property. So you're saying it needs to continue up the hill. That's what that says.
Correct, yes. It would, there would be 25 feet from that top.
Why? But that's not, who's, who's saying that? I mean, that's the, that's not the way buffers are set up now.
We'd have to go back and look and see which best available science this comes out of. But I can't, but I can assure you that we are not adding anything that isn't being included in changes based on best available science.
Wouldn't there already be a steep slope buffer there?
Yeah, you're in the, you're in a geological hazard area if you're at 35%, so you're already in a protected space. But, uh, Bob, if you'd like us to go back and look and see where that comes from, we can ask our consultants. They're the ones who did the
I guess my, I do have, when I hear before I came in and got cranky, and I'm really cranky. I'm having a hard time sitting here. But the, before I came in and got like that, I was going to come in and say, I really like the whole critical areas rewrite. Right? But there's a couple of things that I had an issue with. And it just, every time I open my mouth, it's like that one's not important. That's a wrong read. I sent, I've sent notes like I was asked about questions that I'm getting hammered on here for bringing them up. And I'm like, why didn't you bring them up beforehand?
No, I'm sorry. So the, the only one that we've hit so far from your questions was the hazard tree one. And you're right, we skimmed that one a little bit, so we apologize for that. But this particular one and the science one wasn't brought up ahead of time. Uh, happy to look back though, because again, our consultants did the best available science scrub to figure out like where there are holes that we need to fill, so we can go back to that to figure out where this particular thing comes from. There's they have a whole table that we can go look through that, that shares the explanation.
And I looked at, and you had best available science. I spent, I spent a long time
I believe.
reading. And I guess the couple I've asked best available science on, I get, and see, I don't know that best available science, part of me goes, what does that mean? Does that mean it's a rule? Because we're not just giving things away because somebody wants them.
So the way that the GMA is set up is you have to address best available science in your critical areas ordinance. And it is up to the local jurisdictions to figure out how to do that. Now, a lot of existing best available science has already been tried through appeals where a jurisdiction has tried to do a, do it in a certain way, and then a state agency or future wise has appealed it. So there's there's also land use law that we can go back and look at for a number of items. So we have to address changes in best available science, and that is what we asked our consultant to do. Go through best available science, get us a checklist of where their read is, is we're not complying with best available science. And then their recommendation, and we asked for recommendations of how are other similar jurisdictions handling it? So that we're trying to fit with other jurisdictions.
So my friends on the board asked me, hey, you spent the last 10 years dabbling in this, not an expert at it, but would you look at it? So I did, and I've made a couple of comments and I'm done, all right? Um, so now I'm going to sit and listen like everybody else and get fed 150 page document which is basically good and everything's fine, but we can't have this.
I really would like you to continue to ask the questions. And then if we don't have the answer, like this particular one, we didn't, we didn't prep for this answer. So I'm happy to try and get that answer back to you. Right? Um, the hazard tree one, uh, isn't a best available science one. That is related to just trying to make sure that people have time after removing a hazardous tree to deal with it. Um, again, the signs one weren't prepped for that one, but that one.
And then the comment that hey, yeah, we'll talk, I get an email, hey, we'll talk about yourself tomorrow night. And then the first question I ask is, oh yeah, we blew by that.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry that we skimmed by the hazard tree one. So let's, let's make sure that we're hitting them as we go through. And please don't not share with us your comments. We'll try to answer them here tonight. If we can't, we will absolutely get back to you to answer those questions. Okay? So I'm going to, I have this one on my to do list. Natalie and I will figure out where this particular one comes from and get that information back to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on.
Okay, great. Next slide, please. Did I already read this one or no? Okay, um.
That's where you're at, was the, um, disconnected.
Good, okay.
Yeah, functionally disconnected.
Right, so this, like, talks about functionally disconnected, um, buffers and how to address that. So if you have something that's constructed that functionally reduces the efficacy of a buffer because of that, um, that improvement, that can be considered. Um, also, the section continues to discuss, um, legally established buffers and their vesting. So legally established buffers, uh, as part of an approval such as a, a subdivision or an approved, uh, permit um, are vested and, um, and they can be honored if they are at least 50% of the current standard, uh, buffer width. Um, and also if the development addresses impact minimization measures of table seventeen thirty-eight dash four. The administrator can also ask for a critical areas report to discuss the, uh, functional disconnection if there's any question to that. Any questions on, on this section? Okay, next slide. The next few updates establish new criteria for buffer averaging and to ensure no, uh, net loss of buffer functions and values. Um, this is consistent with best available science and the impact minimization measured, measures. Buffer mitigation shall replace the buffer functions lost from development. And this is not intended to require replanting of an existing buffer when activity is outside of regulated areas. Uh, mitigation and replanting is to compensate for the development activity impact. And the code expands on mitigation opportunities by allowing the director to approve innovative mitigation projects that are supported by best available science. Any questions on that? Okay, next slide.
I have a question real quick, Natalie. Um, we, we keep using the term administrator and now I've seen director, like, who are these people? What are these actual positions?
Uh, yeah, the, the administrator is defined as the director or designee. So that would be either by the director's authority or the permit reviewer. Um, if it says director specifically, it would be only the director.
Of community development, so.
Community development, correct.
Got it.
Administrator, when it's delegated, may be a hearing examiner.
Okay.
Or it could be, you know, we don't currently have a planning manager for the division that does the permit review, but certain elements could be delegated by the director to the planning manager as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to fish and wildlife habitat conservation area. Notable changes besides the code reorganization include reviewing impacts to aquatic buffer that exceed the allowances. May allowances in code for minimum buffers may be approved only through a reasonable use exception or variance application. And there is added clarity that consultation with WDFW for all the priority and habitat species is at the discretion of the administrator, so as not to overburden the permit process. So consultation with those WDFW priority species would be handled on a case-by-case basis as determined by the administrator. Are there any questions on those two items? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. The next section is new criteria under the identification of aquatic habitat. And this reads aquatic habitat does not include such artificial features or constructs as irrigation delivery systems, irrigation infrastructure, irrigation canals, or drainage ditches that lie within the boundaries of and are maintained by a port district or an irrigation district or company. So this is not a blanket statement that applies to all property owners, only port districts or irrigation district companies. So are there any questions on this one?
Bob, this is one of yours. Did you want to address that further? You were asking regarding the ditches and if this was something that we needed more clarity on regarding fish habitat? So these would be, these are not just pre-existing, so...
Current industrial development in Lewis County is filled with type F streams that run through them. And they would argue that they are ditches, they don't want any buffers on them, and by and large, they're win in that argument. And then the farmers have a program called a VSP program, and they call their farm ditches ditches. And they're not, they're salmon highways. And you could treat them nicer by putting a tree or two on them rather than let the temperature of the water go up and let the dirt slough off. So the only thing I asked on this was pre-existing. If it's, so if somebody brings in a permit and wants it at the county, and he wants to put an industrial park...
So just to answer the question, no, this code does not say pre-existing or new, it would apply to both. And we...
And it doesn't need to, so you could have said that to me before I come here and make a big deal out of it. But go ahead, so it doesn't need to be, is it good?
So my response to your question is it doesn't currently say that it's existing, pre-existing. It is specific though to those facilities that are run by a port district or an irrigation district. So it is not, it doesn't apply to an individual property owner. So an industrial development, unless the port district is running that irrigation system, the industrial developer doesn't get this clause.
What if they buy the 50 acres right next door?
The property owner or the port district?
Port district.
So if the port district is buying property and then they're running an irrigation drainage ditch through that, and they're actually maintaining it in that way, then they can fall into this. So the port districts, this is saying that a port district or an irrigation district has a different standard applied to them.
So if they buy the 50 acres from the farmer next door, is it pre-existing? Do they, are they ditches or are they salmon streams?
Well, they'd have to demonstrate that it meets this, that these are irrigation delivery systems, irrigation infrastructure. If, no, but I'm not trying to negate your question, I'm just trying to answer what this says, what this says, right? And so if, I think what you're arguing for is that you don't, that you don't want it to say that, that you'd like it to say something different. Right? You would like it to be clearer.
What I'd like is anybody that can treat a type F salmon stream as a ditch, I'd like it to already be that way, right now, never again. And so if you ever had the port say, "I want to go and buy 50 acres next to them" that had a type F on it, and they do, right down there, they do, I'd like them not to be able to do it, I'd like them not to be able to buy the land, have to be so constrained by it.
Okay, so...
That's why.
Okay, so I, yeah.
You can't say pre...
No, 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 you can't, I'm just, I'm just trying to cool the temperature down a little bit, because I'm just trying to take in what you'd like it to say, so that then we can run it by our consultants and figure out what we can change this to. So you, what you'd like this to be clear is that if the aquatic habitat is pre-existing as a type F stream, that you can't automatically disqualify it because the port district has purchased that property. Right?
That sounds...
Okay, so I'm going to make that note.
A port district or anybody else on this, right?
Okay, so let me take that, what you want the code to say back to our consultants and see if we can make a change related to that, because I better understand your concern now.
Let's go with, it was a general concern...
Wendy, why, why the, why the carve-out for the port or the irrigation?
Sorry, Gretchen, you cut out just a little bit and I didn't get the full question, would you restate that?
Why, why is there a carve-out for port district, irrigation district, or company? Why would they not be asked to follow the same?
I think because the intent here, notwithstanding what Bob is saying, I think I understand what you're saying and why you have the concern over it, so we can work on that language. But notwithstanding that, I think the intent of what this language was is we're not trying to say that irrigation facilities, things that are treated as irrigation facilities, are going to be treated as aquatic habitat. And I think what Bob is saying, and I think what we can talk to our consultants about, is trying to clarify that if a stream is classified, pre-existing classified as a type F, that you can't use this clause to get out of that, because those are salmon habitat. And I don't think the intent of this was to capture salmon habitat, so...
If I'm going to buy a farm next door, it has irrigation delivery systems on them that are type F streams, and he's only been hiding under it for a VSP program.
Yep, I get your point, yep. So I think, I think unlike, you know, the, some of the other ones where I don't think there's a lot of wiggle room, I think the intent of this and the way that you're reading it, there's room for work on this one, for sure. So let's, let us take this back to our consultant to make sure now that we understand what the concern is, that we're not creating a loophole where a stream can be classified as a type F stream, and then someone purchase it, the port purchases it, and that automatically gives them an out to not have to address it as salmon habitat. So that, let's address that issue.
I think you got it right.
Okay.
It's a type F...
It's type F.
That the farmer doesn't get to say it's not a type F. Right now, the port's got these going through the port. Braun Industries got them going through there.
Yeah, so I think, I think I better understand what you're, what you'd like this to be, and I think it still matches the intent behind this. So let us work on that particular one and bring back some other language around that.
Great, thank you for that, Commissioner. We will move on to the next slide. Geologically hazardous areas, really only one small update to the section, which the statement for consideration of natural processes and for protecting stream habitats from highly erosive soils, that is, that should be considered in a geologically hazardous report, so that provision is added. Any questions on that? That's, okay, great. Next slide, please. Limited updates to the critical aquifer recharge. We added some prohibitions on certain injection wells and updated the definition for wellhead protection area based on, both of these are based on the Department of Health guidance. The updated portion of the definition is in bold on this slide here, and it adds that protective areas associated with public drinking water sources established by water systems and approved or assigned by the State Department of Health. So that's an update to our definition. Any questions on this section?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make some sense out of this. As you all know, I'm from Windlock, and that whole area, the whole area that is now annexed, of course, it's now the city problem, but this is exactly what you're talking about. The whole area, 1,500 acres, was just, we made it a, you know, urban growth area, and it's now anything except, and there's wells everywhere. We're having this exact same problem. You know, people's wells no longer work, or the city says you don't get to do it anymore. Now, that's not your problem, I understand that, but it started here. I mean, it started when we resowned all this stuff.
Is there something though, specific to the amendments that we're making?
Yeah.
Okay. By and large, the critical aquifer recharge area is becoming more protective of critical aquifer recharge areas.
Well, in that case, that whole 1,500 acres should be set aside. Every drop of rain that falls out there goes down into the Olaqua Creek.
Right, so other than, other than that, because we can't do anything about that, that's already been done. But the, what Natalie just described are a couple of changes to the karas that are more protective of the karas.
You're listening to an architect say we need a little bit more protection, I mean, this is insane.
Yeah, are you feeling good?
Okay, great, next slide, please. Minor update to the non-conforming activities. This adds roads, trails, utilities, and other infrastructure to existing structures provisions. So non-conforming activity can continue subject to the provisions contained within this section. So if it's not expanded into the critical area, you can continue to use whatever facility within that list, including these additions of roads, trails, utilities, and other infrastructure, and maintain that. Any questions with that addition? Again, a little bit Public Works oriented for maintenance and repair. Okay, hearing no questions, we'll go to the next slide. So we are close to the end of this presentation, some take-home messages. And we've certainly heard all the comments, and we can explore those further with our consultants, and we really appreciate your comments and questions. Overall, though, there are very few changes to the code. Critical area ordinance already compiles most of the best available science, so there were just a few, a few updates to make. The biggest changes are really around the reorganization of the existing code, updates to the wetland and streams, reasonable use and mitigation aspects, and the added flexibility for, and clarity for Public Works on what projects are exempt and what they can do moving forward. Next slide, please. So our next step is to set a date for the Planning Commission public hearing. We're looking at either November 10th or 12th, so we would, we would ask the commission to pick one of those days for us.
Before we do that, could I ask a question to one of our commissioners, please? Bob, over the last year, you've, you've mentioned that you have a lot of points that you wanted to discuss and to maybe make changes to the critical area ordinance. We've hit on three of them tonight, are there more? Because I've been looking forward to hearing all of your proposals for, you know, critical areas ordinance, because I too am concerned about it, but I'm coming from, from a flood control perspective. And so I wanted to get on the same page with you and to make sure that we've addressed all of your concerns. And then if there's any things that you propose that maybe we can, you know, run by other people, if we need their expertise, you know, that we engage in that kind of a dialogue with the appropriate people. I don't want anything that you have percolating in the back of burner of your stove to go undone or unsaid.
I think I said it, because by and large, everything in it, they have picked up on a lot of stuff. I was upset a while back, oh, I had a discussion about, I thought there was some dam stuff in there. That was on a draft that it hadn't even gone to the engineers yet. So then what we got the other day, we see stuff that matches with Army Corps of Engineers, the term that no net loss. That's a huge get for the critical areas ordinance. The hazardous trees, it's a good get. I mean, that's been one of my personal, I'll never speak to me again, problems with other new space things. So the answer to your question is, I think it's good, I...
Turned it off, I think it's, sorry Gretchen. The answer was, "Where's all my bitchin' from the last year?", and I, that was the question. No, 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 no.
I didn't hear it as bitchin'.
Hold on, no, no, no.
I've been sitting on the seat of my chair.
Let me go with Gretchen, let me explain. So I think most of it's been picked up. The term I just used that I really liked is the no net loss. It just matches us with the Army Corps. I think the stuff you hear me animated about is stuff that I had an issue with, but it's better. It's better than it was, and so...
No, thank you, and I've, I've been looking forward to hearing all of your laundry list of, you know, of wants. And I don't want to make sure that we've covered them all, because, you know, I want to make the place better. I mean, we all do, you know, but we want to do it in a common sense way that makes sense.
But the, you know, one thing when I look at all that, remember that, so I learned all this because I went through a short plat, and we were just asking about short plats. And we were, so I don't think we've made the short plats any easier, and we still have simple segs. And so, simple segs in the county, if we ever got rid of those, then we do.
So I do want to mention that, this is an aside on simple segs, thank you for bringing that up. We expect the legislature to revise the state subdivision laws this session, which means following that, we have to do a subdivision rewrite, and we can address simple segs during that, because that's part of it. So we're expecting a full subdivision rewrite after legislative session.
And just so my commissioners hear me say this, you could make some corrections to simple segs that protected critical areas and then still allow kicking some of the can down the road. I mean, if you wanted to, you wouldn't have to just completely throw it out, because...
Yeah, we've just, knowing, so the legislation for redoing subdivisions was proposed last session, and we knew it wouldn't go because it's a full rewrite. And so we've just been holding off waiting for that, so that we can take on all land divisions under one bucket. And you're absolutely right, there's some nuance to how we do simple segs, so it is coming. It's not necessarily in here, but we've long agreed with you on needing to address simple segs, and I think we're finally at the moment that we get to do that once this legislation gets through. So that's an aside, but yeah, simple segs coming.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. I really wanted to make sure that we addressed all of your concerns, because I've been looking forward to hearing them all. All right, so the next thing we have on the agenda then is setting a date for the Planning Commission public hearing on November 10th or 12th.
Can we, sorry, we just were side barring, I apologize, we had a little sidebar. I wrote down four items to come back to based on Commissioner Russell's questions. We do need to set our date, because November 11th is Veterans Day, so it can't be November 11th, which is why we got to pick a different day. But we were considering dropping October 28th workshop and just moving straight to the hearing. But another thing is if you would like us to come back with, I mean, we would give you the staff report no matter what, but if you'd like us to do the staff report and meet on the 28th so we can discuss that, we don't have to get rid of the 28th either. So we can meet on the 28th and do another workshop, and then we do need to pick between the 10th and 12th.
I do want to do another workshop. I do want to do another workshop on the 28th. I don't want to rush any of this, I want to make sure that we've covered everything and we're as clear as we possibly can be. Okay. Going then to the 10th, 11th, or 12th, who's available on the 10th for a meeting? Okay, one, two, three. Jason?
As far as I know, I could do either one.
Okay, Bob, are you available on the 10th? Gretchen, are you available on the 10th?
Yeah, I can do either as well.
Okay, now I'm going to ask the 12th. If everybody's available on the 12th, then we can just pick which one we like best. Otherwise, if somebody's not available on the 12th, we'll go for the 10th. Okay, the 10th it is. Okay, that was easy.
It's the hearing, which would have been on November 11th, but November 11th is Veterans Day, and so will be closed, and we don't have time to push it, because we have to be done with everything by December 31st, and we got to get to the board too.
How much public input do you expect?
Probably very little public input on this.
I don't think I know what we're talking about, so.
Yeah, I'm going to need another couple of weeks to digest this better myself, so.
It's, you know, the take-home message that Natalie shared. Yeah. So, the take-home message that Natalie shared with, even though the document is big, actually, when you go through it, besides rearranging some things, the change, there aren't very many changes. We really aren't changing much. Our critical areas ordinance is pretty stinking solid, really, and what we're changing, we have limited our consultants to what do we need to change, what do they recommend we change to comply. To your point, Mr. Corbin, that doesn't mean that if you guys have concerns and you want to make other changes, that we can't consider other, we certainly can, just like we could with the rest of it, we have just kept this as tight as we possibly can to conform to state law, and that's what's been presented to you. And we did have the agencies do early review of this, so we went out to Fish and Wildlife, Ecology, Department of Health, the Chehalis Tribe, and said, you know, do you guys want to give us some comments before it becomes formal, right? They have a formal opportunity through Commerce Review, but we gave them an early opportunity, because we wanted to hear from them. So, we've also tried to address as much as we can of them, their comments in here, so.
That's why this would have been a great opportunity, if Bob had any other suggestions, you know, that we...
Get them in.
Yeah, get them in.
And so, that's like, that is absolutely part of your purview, so remember that when you guys are voting to make a recommendation to the board, you can say, I move that we recommend the draft as staff has presented it with the following amendments, and, right? And you guys can propose what those amendments are, and we'll take them forward to the board for consideration. So, so far, what I'm hearing is likely an amendment is related to the drainage ditch issue, right? So, we've discussed that, we're going to go back to our consultants, we'll propose some different language around that one, back to you guys in a staff report, but if there are other items like that, that you have proposed language, let us know, so we can have a conversation about those, and we'll, we can get them in, right?
Well, let me ask, what about the steep slope thing? Did we decide that there's never going to be an example, or did we decide that there would be an example, and why wouldn't we do it? I couldn't spare it, it's my own property.
I have it on my list as a go-back-and-figure-out-what-best-available-science-that-comes-from, and share that back with you, so you have a better sense of what that's about, because we haven't, we hadn't looked into that particular one to give you any better sense of it, so let us get that back as part of a staff report, and then we can talk about that one.
And I guess, you know, when I was reading them, anytime it said anything about add to, that's usually when I'm starting to look about what is it, why is it doing that? I mean, I spent 10 years reading it, why are we changing it? Right? So, that, when I see steep slopes change, I had my own run-in with a steep slope, and I thought it was handled pretty well with the way it was currently written.
Yep, so we'll just figure out the details of where that one comes from and share that back with you in your staff report, so that what I have, I have four items. We'll go back and reiterate a little bit of the tree language, so that if it still isn't clear, you guys can definitely, you know, bring it up again. We'll double-check on the demarcation of the edge, which we went through for fencing and signage, we'll just double-check on that particular piece. We will figure out what the best available science is related to that 35% slope wetland buffer and explain that, and then we're going to clarify the pre-existing type F stream as related to the drainage ditches. So, those are four items I have for us to put in a staff report before we meet on the 28th. Did I miss anything? And if I did, you can email it and say, you missed this, please put it in your staff report, we will.
Okay, all right, so we have settled on November 10th then for the public hearing, and let's see. Commissioners, please get your questions or additional verbiage to the staff, Natalie, by November 7th, so they can prepare the responses for the next meeting, or excuse me, for the public hearing. Also, there will be no meetings the week of Thanksgiving or Christmas, so the last meeting of the year will be on December 9th, and the agenda will be the Planning Commission's 2026 docket presentation and training. If you'll be unable to attend the November 9th meeting, please, I'm sorry, the November 10th or the December 9th meeting, please let Megan know as soon as possible. Okay, are there any items from staff for go-to-the-order? I went a little out of order, so.
I actually created quite a list today of things I want to share. We have not been together for a while, so I have a number of items, I'm sorry, to share for go-to-the-order. I know we always want to go, but, okay. The comp plan and development regulations that you guys recommended forward were approved by the Board of County Commissioners and went into effect, except for short-term rentals and signs were postponed for effect when they go into effect, and I'll explain short-term rentals in a minute. Everything else was approved and went into effect on October 1. They made virtually no changes, they had a few changes around design, building design constraints within the new urban growth areas at Packedwood on Alaska, but for the most part, they were very complimentary of the work that you guys did and really accepted the work as you presented it forward to them, so I think that's a huge credit, particularly around short-term rentals, which I want to talk for a second, because we got almost no testimony on that, and what that means is you guys solved most of that issue, so congratulations. You don't get support and testimony, you only get complaints. If you had swung too far the other way, when you guys are making your changes, we would have got a lot of complaints from the other side of the topic, right? So, good job. Okay, short-term rental regulations, so those will go into effect on January 1. So, starting January 1, everyone who has a short-term rental will be required to get a permit. They accepted your proposal on what those requirements would be completely, they didn't change those. So, we're right now working on what the permit application and process will look like for that, so that we're ready on January 1. They also recommended that we form an advisory group, steering committee group, related to that, they loved that idea, and the proposal is well there. In order to do that, we've decided to take a step back and a bigger look, and I wanted to share this with you, because it affects the Planning Commission itself. So, you remember we were proposing to make changes to how the Planning Commission nominates, would nominate your replacements, right? So, I was modifying your guys' structure code section, which is 211 in our code, but then we need to form this new advisory group, and we realized, we don't have one code that sets up similar structure for how we establish and maintain advisory groups in Lewis County, and that makes it really difficult to remember, oh, well, on this committee, they serve for this many terms, you know what I mean? It's just very chaotic, and so what we've decided to do is take a step back and write a new code that is an advisory groups code, and this is how you establish and maintain advisory groups, and it comports completely with how we run Planning Commission, and it adds in some new language that we had reviewed and discussed, related to doing the nominations, we changed some of the eligibility criteria in there, added the conflict of interest language, the stuff that we had discussed. So, that moved into this new code that we're bringing forward over the next month to set up that structure, and then so the Planning Commission code actually is being reduced to take those sections completely out and refer to the new section. So, your guys' code is changing, we're creating a new code for advisory groups, and then we're going to form a short-term rental group under that new code. So, a lot of little moving parts in there. The substantive for you guys is really that we will be asking you to nominate the replacement for Lori's position. So, once we get that structure set up, we'll bring, we'll bring you guys, the people who have applied, and you can do that nomination there. That's really the only structural change for you.
And then will we have the ability to nominate the members of the advisory committee? Short-term rental advisory committee?
So, I need to work on the bylaws of that, so there will still...
You said you would like for me to work with you on that.
And I have not gotten there yet, so, yeah. The bylaws of that will be where we can get into the detail of that particular thing, right? Because the structure for advisory groups in total won't have the detail for every group, so we still need to work on the bylaws, so I don't know yet how we're going to do it.
Okay.
We'll get there. I have two more things to go over and go-to-the-order, but are there other questions about the development regulations, short-term rental stuff? You guys spent so much time on that. We're good? We're expecting 600, yeah, we're expecting like 600 applications for short-term rental permits on January 2.
Good job.
It'll be so much fun.
Will we get a chance to look at what the permit looks like? Look at the permit itself?
We'll be presenting a draft of what the permit application is going to look like to the Board of County Commissioners. I can let you know when that will be, so that you guys can tune into that. They've asked specifically that they get to approve that. Which typically, we don't do that, but since this is so new and such an important topic, we are going to give it to them and make sure that they thumbs up what that looks like. So. Okay, so a few other things, next Monday, there is a hearing, it's a joint hearing, Board of County Commissioners and the Chehalis City Council for annexation of almost the entire Chehalis UGA. So, I just want to let you guys know that that hearing is taking place. It's a huge area of land that then would move from county to city jurisdiction through that. They're doing it by ILA, which is one of the newer processes, I think it was 2022, that the ILA processes were added to the RCW, so using one of those newer processes. It is not automatic, you don't automatically on the 20th, there's a 45-day period by which BRB can be invoked, and then if they are, there's a period after that, so it's not immediate, but that's coming up, just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, big deal. And then I also wanted to give you guys an opportunity, there's been a lot of media around the Centralia urban growth area, and I wasn't sure if you had any questions about what's going on with the UGA piece of it, since again...
I know, I read the newspaper cover to cover, and I don't know what you're talking about, so I must have missed it.
City of Centralia...
I don't read the newspaper at all, and I don't know either.
Okay, so there's two of us, there we go.
Oh.
I just was looking for an excuse for being uneducated.
So, the City of Centralia enacted a moratorium on distribution warehouse, new distribution warehouses for six months. Again, I just wasn't, I didn't know if you guys wanted, if you had any questions about it.
That's all, City of Centralia.
No, it's in the urban growth area, it's our jurisdiction. The port is in, no, the port is not in the city, the port is in the UGA. That's all, I don't need to say anything.
How does it...
It's just been in the news.
Yeah, does it impact us? I mean...
Yeah, what's the deal with it? Give me like, yeah, what's the deal with it?
Well, so, the city enacted a moratorium on the, on distribution warehouse, within the new distribution warehouse, which is one of the things that the port intends to do, and it's a six-month moratorium, and so there's, it could impact Planning Commission, just depending on the outcome of, you know, any negotiations that are taking place about how to proceed with development in the urban, in the urban growth area associated with industrial development.
So, why did they do that?
I, they did not, I mean, we could go back and read their, their specific ordinance as to the rationale behind it, but they did not, I don't believe they gave a clear explanation in there, and I don't want to presume...
Yeah.
They said there was an emergency that exists. I know that the underlying concern is transportation on Harrison.
Right.
Right, that's an under...
I mean, I know where you're talking about, yeah.
...from the public and from, you know, so there's been an underlying concern, yeah.
And then that will likely get challenged, there'll be some legal stuff, and that's kind of how that's going to go, or...
What, the moratorium?
Well, yeah, just the whole, or they can't...
It's not been challenged.
No, okay.
Yeah, so could it result in more work for you guys? It could, I don't know what the outcome of this whole situation will be.
So, they are working with the board, trying to find some solution presumably. No.
Presumably, I don't know. I don't know what's going, I mean, I don't, I'm not privy to what goes on behind the scenes, I just know that this is happening, and yes, it could have impact, because depending on the outcome, you know, it is our urban growth area, and so if we need to change any approaches to land use in that urban growth area, it will come back to you.
It's our urban growth area, but Centralia put the moratorium on it, right? Is that what I heard? Okay. In the UGA.
We have long allowed cities to implement their zoning and development regulations in the UGA and have continued to do that, so we rely on the City of Centralia's development regulations for that space. We don't apply our own development regulations to it.
So, wasn't there talk of a new freeway interchange up at the North End? And was that the traffic mitigation, part of the traffic mitigation plan that they're having issues on Harrison with?
I don't actually know where the North County interchange discussion is at this exact moment, but yes, it's always been a big topic of conversation, right? That North County interchange.
Apparently, it's just like, I don't know if anybody knows where the money's at.
I would need to probably talk with our Public Works Department to find out about where that is in its process, because I just have not been tracking the North County interchange, but that is certainly part of it, part of that conversation.
Because if that ever goes through, and that solves a lot of the traffic problems on Harrison, then, you know, that could affect then this, this moratorium on...
Right, the moratorium is only six months, so under state law, you can enact a six-month moratorium under emergency provisions. You can also extend it another six months. Typically, these moratoriums are used when the state passes a new law and the local government has no laws on the books to implement it, and so you may then throw down a moratorium to give yourself time to create the rules associated with it, that's usually how this is used, so. Yeah, so yes, I do think that there's a chance that this may come back in front of you guys. There's also a chance that it won't, so, you know, Centralia always has the opportunity to start annexing space too, and bringing it into their city limits.
Okay, next?
That, I believe, is it for my long list of, I haven't talked to you guys in a long time.
You put on here that you wanted to mention about the permit process timeline?
I did, and I did not have a chance to put the table together, so I was going to share a table that shows the days at which most of our permits live in review compared to our timelines, and the table, the data actually shows that we are extremely fast, we are well, well below our mandated timelines across the board, but I didn't have time in the past couple of days to get the table together for you.
I was thinking that that might be good information to publish out in the public, you know, actually push it out there in the Chronicle and other news media, because, you know, when I hear contractors saying it takes forever to get a permit, you know, I'd like for them to have some perspective, you know, that perhaps maybe...
There are certain permits that 100% have issues and they take a long time, but when you put the numbers together of the permits that we're processing, and our average time and our min's and maxes in there, we process things extremely fast.
I would encourage you to publish that.
I wanted to get it to you tonight, but I just have not had time to.
When we're talking about this department's turnaround, correct?
We're talking about, yeah, well, we're talking about the permits that you're, it includes, we are including in that like our short plats and long plats, so those are our permits. So, master site review, special use permits, SEPA's, short plats, long plats, a lot of the stuff that we typically are doing. Yeah.
I periodically hear from people... I periodically hear from people and they say, "It takes forever to get a permit." Well, you know, it'd be nice to have that information pushed out there and then, you know, they can hopefully identify their particular situation with, you know.
There are absolutely individual situations that take a long time, no doubt about it.
Understandable.
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay, we've addressed good of the order. We've addressed the calendar change, no meetings on Thanksgiving and Christmas. Okay, any good of the order from the Planning Commissioners?
Now, I have to say that most of the small stuff does go very quickly. I don't want to, you know, I'm trying to crap on the whole
We delay yours on purpose.
Yeah, no, no, mine, actually, everything goes, it's just certain, certain stuff. But, yeah, I, just to throw that out there, it's not, it's not all of them. But they can take some time, it happens, I've heard.
Okay, Roger, haven't heard from you tonight. Okay, Gretchen, do you have anything for good of the order?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, all right. Well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Jason, moved, we are adjourned.